All right, I call this meeting in the Coquille City Council order. Mr. Rice, you're going to make the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the true republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Good evening, everybody. So we're on agenda item number three, Mayor's Comments. I'm going to keep my comments brief except for to say the sad situation that jail continues on. The merciful good news is that even though we've only got 49 jail beds, with the weather being so bad, crooks don't like to stick around so much when the river's high and the rains are heavy. But as the weather gets better, I expect the situation with the jail to get increasingly worse. And sadly, there seems to be no answers on the table from our friends at the county at the present time. But I know our business owners are going to keep being vigilant and our Chamber of Commerce is going to be vigilant. And if you're concerned at all about anything, just call the top. You know, even if it turns out to be a small thing, just don't be afraid to pick up the phone and call one of our offices that are there to help. All right, let's go on to council comments. I'll start with Councilor Graham.
Go, Graham.
All right, points for Brett. And Councilor Eaton?
Okay, well, I'll fill in. I helped with Carousel move from downtown to the Jefferson School. And it was quite undertaking. I need to congratulate Linda for overseeing that. I would have pulled my hair out, but everyone worked hard. Also, the garden club, which meets tomorrow in the small auditorium at one, last month had a speaker on the SERC, the Community Emergency Response Team. And I did that course some years ago when it was pretty new. Now you get a whole bunch more goodies and a whole bunch more information. So I would urge everyone to take that SERC course. I went to the Senator Merkley reception and talk at Burnpoint School and enjoyed that very much, especially the questions that the kids had for the senator. I thought they were very well thought out. I helped weed around the clock tower with the members of the garden club. And it just about turned out into a mud wrestling because we were wrestling with mud there. But we got some of the weeds out and it should be a beautiful place to spring. And went to the Chamber of Commerce where Ben talked about the downtown area. And that was very well done and well thought out as well, Ben. And that's it.
All right. As you can see, Council President Reese isn't with us. He's out on vacation and he'll be back with us soon. Councilor Chappelle?
No comment.
Councilor Sholder?
Well, I think Susan and I must do a lot of the same things except by the plant flowers. So I didn't do that, but I did go through Senator Merkley. And the Carousel is up at Jefferson School. So we will be getting the word out as to what days we're going to be opening. We'll be having lots of classes and we're going to do a lot more advertising. So please, you know, ask any of us and we will be putting it in downtown in the windows and things. And we have a display in Kathy's window now and we're going to be doing a couple of other windows that will be putting the Carousel out and all that things to help the Carousel. So anyway, please, any questions, give us a call. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Linda. Oh, I thought you had a question right there, Dave. I was looking over your hand or... Councilor Kay Lard?
Speaking of flowers, I had a red tulip blooming. And so I went out to look at it the other day and see where the others were. The deer ate down all the ones that were coming out. Their little noses went right down in there and they ate all the new stems. So I probably won't have any tulips this year. But I've been really busy. Our national president from Alaska is coming for VFW in April. And so I've been really busy working on all the VFW things. Went to conference at Newport last year, the last week. And Ms. Coos County is coming this Saturday night. Judy has tickets until Friday. So if anyone wants to go see Ms. Coos County, there's lots of girls running.
In the large auditorium?
It's a Hales Performing Arts. It's always a Hales Performing Arts. There's like 600 seats there, I think. So it's always a good show, a lot of fun. And then I went to Bay, well, three of us went to the, several of us went to Bay Fun Festival Saturday night and talked to lots of people and all wanted different improvements for their area. Anyway, that's all. I'm just busy.
Thank you, Fran. Let's go to staff reports. As you can see, Chief Blue's not with us. Mr. Duffner's not with us and Mr. Urban's not with us. But we've got their written reports. So if any members of the council have any questions regarding their departments, I know Ben will do his best to answer them. So are there any questions regarding the finance, police, or public works reports? I know that's sort of a catch-all, but you know, they're in the packet. We've had time to read themself. Your questions, now's the time. All right, then, hearing none, we'll move on to the library director's report. Director Connor?
Thank you very much. You have my report in front of you. This is a very exciting night for me. The construction committee, which had representatives from every area of the city, met and looked at the proposals that we got for our pre-design and made their recommendation to the foundation board. The foundation board made their recommendation to you and it's in your packet to act on tonight if you choose to do that. In my report, we have a complete staff. We have two wonderful new workers at the library, Tina Hallmark and Lori Gunther. They're friendly, intelligent, and very effective, very efficient, working in the library. And we all get along really well. So come in and see us helping you. In my report, I talk about how one of our disks in our server has, the storm did not fry it. It was defective. I bought it last November and it was under warranty. I sent it back to the company and I just, advice dirty tonight, got word from them that indeed it was a defective disk and they are going to replace it in three to five days. This morning, what? This morning is when I talked to our IT guy and he, an information technologist for the county system. And he's now working at the Banden Library. He's going to finish that up maybe this week. He's redoing everything, which really needs to be done. We're so outdated. So it might not be next week. It might be later before he can install that because it will involve reconfiguring the hard drive. Our people have been so, so wonderful about living without access to the internet at the library. Our Wi-Fi still works and if they bring their own devices, they can get on the internet. But they have been very pleasant about the fact that, yes, our computers are still down and you can't get on the internet. The Friends Foundation welcomes anybody that wants to come and help us sort all of our books to get ready for another book sale. That's going to happen on Saturday, February 20th. One of the perks, if you help sort, is if you see anything you want, you could buy it right then and there. And team trivia, we found a theme for it. The Wizard of Oz. The Wizard of Oz is going to be the theme. That's not what the questions will be. That's how you dress up. That's how you decorate your table. It'll be fun. I have to answer any questions?
Well, I've already got a reserved name for a team, which is Scarecrow's No-Brainers.
Oh, okay. Now, now, see, we have to, we're going to be...
I gotta lay my claim to that one now.
The winning, the winning team name also gets a prize, as Matt knows.
Forgive me, Councilor Eaton?
That's all right. Last year, we had a circulation of 6,071. This year, it was down about a third. Is there some reason?
I think it's people are using their eBooks. Where in that count is, does not include how many books are being essentially borrowed from the library that downloaded from our eBook collection to which you subscribe. And I think that's part of the reason. I think our circulation is going up now that our internet is down. People are coming into the library and reading. It's very scary, but it's nice to see.
Well, and I know that sometimes from month to month also, I've been on the library board. And it's funny, you sometimes have these variations where there's no consistent reason why. There is a fluctuation, but in the end, I think our circulation was actually up last year.
Yes.
By the end of the year.
It evens out.
So it's on, it's interesting how the waves come there. All right, anything else for the library director? All right, hearing none, we'll move to the fire chief's report. What do you got for us, chief?
Thank you, Mayor and council. Good evening. I'd just like to highlight one thing on my report. Saturday, February 27th, is our 19th annual Pancakes for Life. I'm really happy and glad to say over the last 18 years, Coquille Fire Department's been able to donate close to $30,000 to the Burn Center for Children at a manual hospital in Portland. That would not be able to do that without the citizens' support of such a great event. So I'd just like to invite everyone to come down. We're not going to cancel for many, many, many years. So whatever we make, we're going to donate to the kids up there. As you all know, about a year and a half ago, we did have one of our Coquille kids go up there. And we're just blessed to be able to have money up there to hopefully offset some of his costs and surgeries and stuff, so.
How much, how much does it cost?
It's $5 for adults and $3 for kids.
And what do you get, what do you get for your $5?
All you can eat pancakes, ham, eggs, and mayor's are big pancakes.
I know they are, I know they are.
It was just a softie melt.
Oh. But, but no, no, I'll still get my money's worth even if I do have to pay them. But it's a great event. It helps a good cause. I welcome everybody, I hope everybody comes out to this. I know we have an event also later that night and I'm sure Kathy Simonetti will plug, which is our chamber dinner. And so there's lots of cool stuff to do that day in Coquille. And you can help out a great cause. Now, I know we talked at the last meeting about the whistle or the horn or whatever you want to call it at, at the, at the fire hall. I know Gene Ivy's been collecting signatures and some stuff with that regard. Do you have your surveys there?
Yes. Want them now?
Yeah, I'm just going to address the GP, the whistle, the, right now when we got the fire chief. Oh, I know, but I'm, we're still, I'm dealing with, I just want to deal with the fire chief before we get to this. I just want to address this. All right, yeah, so what do you got there for us, Gene?
We have never had so many people be interested in a subject as the whistle. We had over 200 people come into the office. The first few days, I put it in the paper, in the first few days, we didn't think of having them sign something. And so the third or fourth day, we thought, oh, well, maybe we'll make these little things for people to sign. So, so it's more than this because we missed those first days. But there are over 200 here. And most people took the time to write something on it. They're, what they used to do at the mill or why it's dear to them. And it's just one of the most dear things that has happened since I've been here. So I, some people even readily have them. It's just great.
I'll circ beside the listener out of it. And the results were, I'm assuming overwhelmingly in favor of the whistle or whatever? Because you didn't say what the general skew of the results were.
The general skew, well, I separated those into packets so you could all look at them. And there are no, you know, they're all, we didn't copy any. They're all just, each packet is different. But as I was doing that, I, of course, did have to notice. There are two no's and then 220 yeses. And so there's your answer.
Well, it's actually the council's answer.
Yeah.
Well, you know, Marcus were really interested in that, you know, when their father's touch, way no, Aldo senior. But he worked on that too for a long time ago.
There's a letter. There's a letter in there from, what's his name? That used to be the attorney here at the time.
Al Walsh.
And he, Al Walsh. And he told, he tells about that. And it's included in that.
Could you read that, please? What Al said?
Yeah, one, one of those packets, it's right on top and it says Al Walsh letter. One of you has that?
That's mine. I have.
Okay, maybe you could...
Dave, has that whistle ever been tested for its decibel level?
Never has, no. Actually, this runs off of air out of a 1,000 gallon tank. Where a GP, it actually ran off of steam, but we've never had decibel checks on it, no.
If I may?
Sure.
Gene, when I first came to town, of course, the whistle was there and sounded. And it sounded, I think, at 10 o'clock in the morning. And I would have my mid-morning cup of coffee. And then it would sound at noon and I would have lunch.
You knew when to have lunch.
And then it would sound at 5:00 and I would have my glass of wine. But you know what? I can do the coffee, the lunch, and the wine without it.
Oh.
So I'm, I'm, I think the quiet is better than the siren.
Well, I just have to tell you, I have never had so many people. Read some of those, Susan, and then you'll, you might change your mind.
And I've heard from a number of citizens about this too. I'm not sure some members of the council have heard about this too. This impresses me. This is public participation in the, in the city government. Is there, do you need a motion on this or just general consensus of council?
You want me to read that letter for Al Walsh?
Oh, that's, Fran wants to read it, I'm sure.
You want me to read it?
Yeah, if you'd like to.
Okay, this is from Al Walsh, who used to be an active attorney. And he's retired now. But he said regarding the GP whistle and it's to address to Gene. You probably know all of this, but if not, it might be of interest. I was the attorney for the Coquille Rural Fire District for many years. We had a member on that board also for many years. Name, Aldo Marcus Senior, now deceased. After the GP mill was razed, Aldo started a one-man campaign to have the whistle installed at the fire hall. It was not an easy task and there was some dissension, but he persevered. He felt strongly that since GP had been such a prime presence in Coquille due to the years that it was a fitting tribute. I believe the current fire chief, Wantington, might be able to fill in some of the trials and tribulations since its installation.
I would, I would like to know, chief. Apparently it went out. And have you gotten estimates on resurrecting it?
Not, not price-wise, but we believe the timer and the valve up at the top of the tow, or hose tower, we'd have to replace that valve and the timer. My rough estimate would probably be close to maybe $500 to try to get that up and running for that. Myself and retired fire chief McHugh put that in about probably 1992, '93 at the station. The rural board did step up. We didn't have an air compressor for any of our trucks or any of our air type tools. And so the rural board, with the contingency that we were to blow the whistle, we could get an air compressor with the station. And so we obliged to be able to do that. Yeah, definitely overwhelming with the yays for it. But I definitely do hear when it was blowing, a lot of nays from people just walking around. I think that could address Councilor Graham's concerns maybe about a decibel level. It's very loud as far as US Bank, Coquille Automotive. I had the misfortune of being up on the roof one time in the crowd. It was close to noon. And that was a shocker for that. But people aren't happy to do whatever the council wishes to do. We've even talked about, you know, is there somewhere else that group could take that, be in charge of that? But everything is in place at the station now to be able to do that, so.
Okay, you're lowering the decibels? I don't know that much.
Probably with, just with the valve, probably how much air comes through that valve. It's actually about a two-inch line that goes up to the horn itself. And for seven seconds, that whole tank opens up and takes the 1,000 gallons of air and just rushes up to that. So based on probably the valve that we put in, you probably couldn't lower that, but I'm not an expert on that, so.
Well, that's, sorry, did you have something, Dennis, I could...
I know as deaf as I am, I've been downtown when that thing goes off. It'll wake you up, people.
How about a lawsuit for, you know, something having a heart attack? Have you heard about that, the liability?
Well, Gina, I think should be congratulated for an effort. But I wonder if another person against the harm put out the same effort would get equal or more.
Wait, wait, I, I think you're mistaken.
Well, I can't have the back and forth like this from the audience, Gene. I appreciate what you've done here, but...
Well, it wasn't an effort on my part. I just put in what you, what you guys said last, last meeting. And I'm, I promise, it wa, I mean, it wasn't an effort.
Well, no, that, that's fair. No, I'll let, I appreciate your comment there, Gene. I understand where you're coming from, Susan. That said, I did say I'd like to have a vote on this. So if there's any, I mean, you know, we'll see, the people will see what the council pleases to do on this. So is there any motion at all to fix the whistle?
I think a motion that we fix it and have it reinstalled.
Councilor Chappelle makes a motion. Is there a second? Councilor Kay Lard, seconds?
You've met.
Discussion?
Yes, I'd like to see if you can get the decibel down a little bit then, if you're going to do that.
No, I do.
I can also report, I can report, but I would like to see if that's a concern.
Was that, do you want that in your motion, Dave, or you just want to just go straight to the issue?
If, yeah, to lower the decibel level.
Well, we don't even know what it is. So I think that that can be a staff discretionary decision, remove fixing the whistle. But, all right, Fran, did you want to say something? Just all for it?
Yes, it's just that there's only one no in this pack.
And one is this one.
All right.
Most of the people want it.
Is there any further discussion?
I would like to know if indeed, before we vote on it, how much it would cost and if you could lower the decibels and table this.
Well, there was, so you're making a motion to table this, but that's, you made the motion, you seconded it, so you guys have to consent to table it. So, I mean, would you prefer to just address this now? Because I think the people, I mean, if I, if you deserve a vote.
No, I think these people have gone to the point of doing this. Gene, you went to the, you went to the trouble, I guess for lack of a better term, to do this. And people had the option to vote yes or no, period, okay? Let's just address it now, let's get it taken care of.
And in our years on the council, have we ever seen this kind of output? I have, and I think this is great.
I'd like to say something too. I think that if as many people are for it, I could, it's going to cost you like, say, $500 or something.
I'll give $500 to the team.
I was going to say, I bet people would donate, you know, donate if they feel that's...
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and that's what I was going to ask, Debbie. Does it come out of my fire budget to fix that? Or bringing back the cost and then we find the funds?
Right.
And we have, we've had great citizens. I said they would step up to help donate for that.
Sure, I don't think it's coming out of the fire fund. I think some of us are even...
Well, let me just say this, I'll get on the dunk tank again. We could probably at least raise $500 for it. I'll do it, if we got, I mean, I'll raise the money on the dunk tank if we have.
No, I'm not, I mean, hell, if you, if you need the money, I would, my company would be more than happy to give you the $500 to do it.
And this is the question, that's the question where the council stands on this whistle. So we still have the motion on the floor. Is there any further discussion to the motion? All right, no, Chappelle, we need you to vote. I think I know how you're going to vote, but...
I'm for it.
Oh, okay. Well, you can, you can say aye from over there. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
So we have a majority in the council of four voting for it, so it passes. You know what you got to do and we can come up with the money somehow. I'm confident of that. Thank you, Mayor. All right, so thank you, citizens.
Ben, couldn't that come out of our city promotions? This is something that all of us that have lived here any, for a long time, have heard that whistle for years and years and years. And I think that instead of taking it from page budget, I think that should come out of city promotions or...
I heard money coming from outside of the city and...
Oh, I see.
I think we can privately raise our money.
If anyone voted yes, I'll kick in $2.50.
Oh, he's talking about who filled these out. All right, thank you, fire chief. Is there anything else for the fire chief? I know we got bogged down in this. I just felt the folks deserved an answer and the council stepped up. And even if you didn't vote for it, you gave them an answer though. And that's all they can be asked to do. So, and again, Pancakes for Life, February 27th, for a great cause. Show up and get your fill of pancakes.
Thank you, sir.
All right, city manager's report. Ben, anything in addition to your written report?
First, I'm going to jump back to the public works director's report. Because in there, he did have two grants that he wanted to let the council know about. And just is the council desirous of pursuing both those grants? One is to replace the boat dock at Surtament Park. We would also pursue funding from Fish and Wildlife that would allow part of the dock to be for fishing, which for years has been fished off of. But the marine board hasn't appreciated that. The new dock would be for boat boats and fishermen. The other grant would be a grant with the Oregon State Parks for a trail specifically up in 100, what we like to call 100 acre wood behind Irving and South Burst. And is that a project that we're interested in pursuing right now before we put in for the grant?
Can Tony go ahead with his deal and give it to the city?
Not yet. The, so the appraisal came back and it was too low. There was about a difference of 15,000. We communicated back to the agent, well, would he accept payment of the difference? Would that meet their needs? Because we could get that payment funded by the grant for land acquisition. Or we could come up with the funds somewhere in the city budget and then use that entire amount to, as match. And that could leverage quite a bit of State Parks money. So, but I don't think we have an answer specifically on that question yet. But the opportunity is definitely there. And I think the initial reaction was that there's probably a way to figure this out. So they're still encouraging.
So you're basically asking about three or four things?
Well, two things on these two grants. Should we pursue these grants?
Okay, so the first one's the marine board, one for the new dock. Well, could you clarify again the second one? Forgive me there, Ben.
Exactly, the nice trails grant up in 100 acre wood.
Okay.
One grant for Saturday, was that going to come out of recreation? State Parks Recreation Trail Program?
Yes.
How's that going to impact the Riverwalk's grant application?
I'm not sure. We have a couple of ideas about that. One, we send a message to Salem that we are very excited about parks and they should invest here. Two, the Riverwalk is coming back for its third time to request and it's due. And this one would just be an introduction to the other trail system. And there's a chance that they could both be funded because, you know, I think the $15,000 we'd have asked for that trail grant would be very so insignificant that they might just give it to us.
All right, any other council questions regarding the grants? Are there any objections to pursuing either of them?
I have a question, the second one. I kind of go on the same way that that Dennis does as far as, you know, doing another one just because I don't want to take it away from the Riverwalk.
So one of the rules is one agency cannot have two grants open at the same time. And the thought is that as two separate agencies, the city, independent of the Riverwalk, could be pursuing a separate grant at the same time. And it's really about getting on their radar. on their radar. I doubt that the one would preclude the other from getting funded, at least the Riverwalk, that's, that's our first priority.
All right, so you're not looking, are you, you're not looking for a motion, you're just looking for consensus regarding the grants?
Yes.
I have no opposition to seeking either of them, I don't know how the rest of the council feels though, I mean, if you guys want to support one or the other, it's just gonna let Ben and Kevin know where you're at.
I'm all for the dock.
Yeah.
I think that's kind of questioning, it's likely a lot of people's going on.
Well, then, maybe we need more information on the second one then, is that what you're thinking?
Well, what concern I have is our park master plan, the last meeting we had, we stated that we need to work on existing parks before we start expanding our park system, and this is contrary to what, you know, Parks and Recreation Committee requested.
Well, then, I think you've got your answer, there's a blessing, there's a unified blessing on the dock, sounds like we need more information on the second.
Sounds fine.
Thank you very much, Ben, and anything else?
Thank you, I did get some notes of some corrections on the emergency preparedness event, but I, I do want to say that that has been very well received in the community, we have three sponsors now, our signature sponsor is First Community Credit Union, had a thousand dollars, and they've already paid, and right behind them are Northwest Natural Gas and Comms Camp, still our sponsors, so that's wonderful, and we're getting people excited about this event, that'll be Saturday, April 16th. I'm sorry, I did not have a cost estimate for the improvements on the downtown revitalization plan, I had some back and forth with Pacific Power, and they provided me additional information, and I am waiting on the Dyer Partnership to get us some estimates on what our share of that cost might be.
All right, Fran, you have something?
Yes, if you already sent out this, are you prepared?
Yes.
Well, there's some mistakes in that.
I, I, thank you, and I've got them noted, and we'll be correcting and updating it, so that if anyone else downloads it off the city's website, it'll be correct.
All right.
Okay, and then one other question I was gonna ask, Kevin, what's going on in Fairview that?
Yes, Sunday morning, it was found that the road was collapsing, there was an old culvert under the road that had rusted out all through the top, and it went all the way across the road. Emergency personnel got on it, barricaded the road, this is gonna have a significant impact on our local economy. I had a call from Milky Way Feed today, because they're very concerned about how this is gonna impact their business. They rely on many large truck deliveries each week, about twelve, and even though they're, they are at the end of the line for a lot of these trucks, so the trucks aren't fully loaded, they're just making the last drop off at Milky Way Feed, but these trucks are too long to legally go down Lee Valley Road and go around, and when a milk truck is fully loaded, ten thousand pounds, it can, can't really make it up Hungry Mountain very well. And so, there, they don't have many options, and we'll be looking into that further, to see if there isn't something we can do to assist them and keep their business on my support. But this is a county road, and they're also working with the county to see what the county's timeframe is for getting it fixed. The biggest obstacle, frankly, is the weather. It's, the water table is very high, the ground is saturated, especially right there, you can see the, the standing water backing up in the field, you can't replace the culvert because you can't get compaction in wet ground, and so, in order to do the job, they're gonna have to wait till it dries out, probably late summer, before you can reset the culverts and rebuild the road. So, I'm hoping they can find another solution in between time, Mr. Scolari suggested there might be a portion of a bridge that they could lay down to bridge the problem, but the continuous concern through the season is gonna be the continued erosion from all the wet weather, so that's, that's the situation.
All right, anything else for Ben? Well, thank you, Ben, and, oh, you have?
I do, on his report, on the municipal judge.
Yes.
Have we had any other people interested in that?
No.
And will we meet anybody who is interested?
This is the best opportunity we've had in two years trying, and this is our pro temp judge, who I was originally told about a year ago incorrectly that they were not a bar-certified attorney, but they are, and they are interested at this time in serving as the permanent municipal judge for Kokil. And she's gonna be here tonight, but Pat Davis will be here next month, and would be happy to talk about her qualifications with the city council.
All right, listening.
She's had experience creating municipal courts, working in municipal courts, and has some ideas on how to help us, in fact, she's already working on them with our city attorney.
And by the way, for the folks in the audience who may not know this, everything we're referring to is in this packet, which can get on the city website, or at the library, and so the information on the judicial applicant is there in the packet, it's a lot of useful information, and you can just get it very easily. Before we move to public comment, I need to point a personal privilege, I need a five-minute recess, so we'll reconvene at 7:42.
Dear Ben and city council members, Operation Kokil.
Ben.
Ben.
And.
Ben, and. Dear Ben and city council members.
And.
And.
And, Andy.
And. Operation Kokil is writing to express thanks for the city's generous support of the Kokil Valley Garden Tour, which brings visitors into Kokil for this one-day event. The 2015 tour was attended by one hundred and twelve participants, of which approximately one-third were from outside of the Kokil Valley. There were seven stops on the tour, in addition to other stops such as the farmer's market, where raffles were being held. The raffles attracted participants to see other places of interest in Kokil. The tour was advertised along Oregon's I-5 corridor, and read press releases that reached east to Roseburg and north to Reed'sport. Advertisements replacing newspapers that order in calendar of events on Facebook, and with the state Federation of Garden Gloves, posters replacing Bandin', Roseburg, Gold Beach, Fort Orford, Coos Bay, Lakeside, Reed'sport, and Florence. The Garden Tour leadership will be doing some more fundraisings in this coming year, and more community events, they're building a website, and they have an active Facebook page. We sincerely appreciate the city's generous grants, which support the vitality and beauty of our community. And in the spirit of statistics, this is a letter from the farmer's market. Dear Ben and the city council managers, most people, when they get old, they have to put them on, I gotta take them off. Operation Kokil is writing to express thanks for the city's generous support of the 2015 Kokil Valley Farmer's Market, in granting the market access to space for a nominal fee, and I am giving you the status report. The 2015 Farmer's Market was attended by five thousand five hundred eighteen customers, many of whom were out-of-town visitors. I know I have a little clicker and I counted everybody. The gross vendor income was eighteen thousand two hundred and ninety-three dollars, I know I made them tell me. The market had an average of nine vendors each week. The consignment table was a unique and successful feature of the farmer's mar, market. The, this is where local growers that don't have enough for a booth can participate for a fee. It brought in about nine hundred dollars gross income. So, these are thank you letters for city council, who are you giving these to? And I was also handed some, apparently some begging things here, what's the protocol for begging things? Oh, actually, maybe, I'm not supposed to beg any things. Bye.
Thank you, Don.
You're welcome.
All right, let's go to, oh, Gina, did you need to say anything besides what we already covered?
No, that was me.
All right, very good, thank you, Gina. Suzanne Swan.
I just want to say thank you about the whistle, do I have to go all the way there?
No, I think we can count that, that'll be mine.
Okay, that's it, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I like turning.
And Kathy Simonetti, come on down.
Kathy Simonetti, Kokil, Chamber of Commerce. Just kind of bring you a little up-to-date on the chamber, we have started off 2016, I think with the bang, we have slotted on our calendars for May 2017 to have Culpeper and Merryweather Circus come to town. Talked to Ben about that, we'll give you something in writing as we get a little further on our contract with them. This month, we'll start working on our gay nineties, the 27th, Saturday, the 27th, we will have our chocolate fantasy coming up, we went to the Bay Area Chamber of Commerce, and it was phenomenal, hopefully ours will be as large as theirs someday, and as eventful. The highlight of that evening for me was, I got to meet the chief of the Kokil tribe, I thought that was, it was just awesome, he's a very fantastic person, excellent speaker also. We also have, we're starting an emergency, or CERT program, or a chapter here in Kokil, and I'm working with a CERT program on developing a chapter here in Kokil. We're going to start CERT classes February 16th, from 6:00 PM to 8:30, it's an eight-week class, it will be held here in the city council chambers. Again, that's starting February the 16th, from 6:00 to 8:30, and it is an eight-week class. If anybody's interested in signing up, we'll have a, you know, you can call the chamber, we'll let you know, or you can contact me at the store, or Ben Marchek has some information on it also. We'll have posters we'll be putting up pretty soon. The chamber also has a seat on the Transient Launching Tax Committee, and those meetings are going to start again in March, and hopefully we'll get that to pass this year. Ben did a presentation last month, in the month of January, to the cha, our chamber meeting, and we had a great response to Ben's presentation on the underground electrical, and we hope that the city council will keep this project on the work table, as we look forward to possible ways of making this happen, as we believe that this is the first step to revitalizing our downtown. So we hope that you don't put it on the back burner, that it stays to the front, and will hopefully make the agenda at some point, and I think that's pretty much all I have to say, thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Kathy. Janet Reed, do you want to talk?
No.
All right, always good to keep your options open.
Yeah.
All right, and now we've got Martha Greger, who's with the 15 Now campaign, that wants to raise the minimum wage, and there's so much talk about the bills and the legislature and this and that, and I know I've heard people for it and against it, and from all sorts of different opinions on the subject, and since we had a light agenda, I thought it'd be nice to give her about fifteen minutes to make a presentation on this, and then feel to be questioned, anybody on the council they have. I know this, we've heard some positives and negatives from local business people, and I decided it'd be nice to hear some information, so come on down.
Okay. Well, thank you for the opportunity to speak here tonight, I really appreciate it. I have a handout, my computer was not feeling like working with that system, so I don't have, it, it's on a PowerPoint, but this should be clear, and I have it on the document you ordered.
Are we sharing, or?
No, you can just pass.
Just down.
Oh. Sorry, I was a substitute teacher, so I'm just like, I'll have you look down, and yeah. Um, let's see. Okay. Yeah, and there, actually, see, there's one in the audience with like, one, yeah, so just take one and pass it around if you like. So, as Claire pointed out, I'm a member of the group called 15 Now Oregon, we're a volunteer-led organization, so we don't have many paid organizers, we have been active in the state for a couple of years now, I've been active in this room for about a year, and I'm from the North Bend, thank you, from the North Bend, Coos Bay area, and moved back a few months ago, and have been starting a chapter here in Coos Bay to advocate for raising the minimum wage to a living wage. Many economists consider a fifteen-dollar minimum wage to be a living wage, which would lift one individual, one child out of poverty. I know it sounds like a huge jump, so that's why I'm trying to get out and talk about this issue, it's gonna be phased in over three years, that's what our ballot measure's proposing. We probably have got some counter proposals from the governor and from other groups that are proposing thirteen fifty for rural areas, and now fourteen forty-two for metropolitan areas, the minimum wage. So, there's some discussion about maybe rural areas should be, have a lower minimum wage than the metro areas, but I'd like to take the case that we need it just as much here in rural areas as we would in rural areas. So, I'm going to do a little bit of whether, thinking about whether or not Oregon's economy is working, I would argue that it's not, because we now have poverty that is higher now during, than during the Great Recession, and, there we go, zoom, okay, and many people are working, and if I have this on the projector, you can see that Coos County's here with very high poverty, as well as high rates of government assistance, and seventy-one percent of children of working poor families have a parent that is working, and about half our government assistance is going to people who are working, so these people are, in many cases, working forty hours a week or more, working multiple jobs, they're not able to support themselves. We're not just talking about minimum wage workers, we're also talking about anyone who makes less than fifteen dollars an hour, so preschool teachers, janitors, most people in retail and in food service are making less than fifteen dollars an hour, farm laborers, of course, in the valley in particular, are making low wages too. And it's become quite common in our rural areas as well, as we've transitioned to more of a service-oriented economy, particularly on the coast. Probably all of us are aware of how radically Oregon's rural economy has changed in the past few decades, wages have fallen and benefits have been reduced or have disappeared for many working people, there are fewer opportunities for advancement, so we have a case in which people aren't able to be as upwardly mobile as they were previous decades. So we have about the same availability of low-income, low-wage jobs, but all the benefits of those are different, and the low wage is now very low for many working adults. These minimum wage jobs are no longer just for teenagers or for people in their early twenties, we've really seen a shift over the years, back in the 1990s, only one in five minimum wage workers was making minimum wage a year after that, and now, when they've sampled the general population, one in three minimum wage workers are still working for minimum wage a year after that. And the age of people who make minimum wage has also shifted upwards, so now we have seventy percent of minimum wage earners are twenty-five years old or older, and the average age is thirty-five, so they've really become family wage jobs in a way they weren't prior to the seventies and eighties. Jobs in rural Oregon have tended to stratify a little, gone toward the lower end, and still have some high-wage jobs, but we've kind of have a hollowed-out middle class here as our economy has changed, we also don't have a very diverse economy here, I'm not sure the fifteen-dollar minimum wage will help with all of that, with diversification, but it will help bring money into our economy through higher wages, and low-income people are more likely to spend that money in our local economy. Recently, the share of families with working core has also risen by point seven, point nine percent, so pretty significant in the past seven years. My concern, I could be concerned of a lot of people in the living wage movement is is that we're seeing new generations come into poverty that might not be able to get out of poverty if we don't do something to raise wages. So, some of these challenges are certainly faced by Coos County workers as well as factors that are unique to our rural areas, such as the housing shortages that we're enduring right now, lack of affordable childcare, food insecurity. We're 13th in the nation for food insecurity in Oregon. That's an issue in our county as well. But I also will argue later that some of these challenges that Coos County businesses are facing will also be helped by the minimum wage raise as well. So, we've seen a decline in large industries which really help put fuel in our economic engine and they contract out to smaller businesses and they really help generate a lot of economic growth. So, we've seen a decline in those industries, economic stagnation, and a small customer and consumer base. One small business owner who's supportive of this in cusay is, works with families, works with families a lot. His business serves families and he thinks that there'd be a lot more families able to spend money in this area if we raised the minimum wage. And we do have a lot of working families who are low-income here who just don't consume very much. They don't go out to eat very much. They don't spend a lot of money. We're already paying for low minimum wage right now. You could think of it as we're subsidizing a low minimum wage. So, your tax dollars are going to working families in Oregon, working families only in Oregon. So, exclusive of people who are on government assistance, who are not working, receive $1.8 billion in government assistance every year. So, Coos County residents in particular, 27% are on food assistance. And that has increased even though unemployment has declined in Coos County and in Oregon generally. So, since the recession. So, we've still seen that these jobs that are being created are not really living wage jobs that people can support themselves on. And the poverty threshold for one individual is only a little more than $12,000. But I think many people would agree that $12,000 is certainly not enough to live off of for a, for one person for a year too, or anywhere in the state. So, we just see the continued government assistance has become really common, kind of chronic in a way. And we're already paying for that just through the system of social services when really people could be receiving those wages, they could be earning them for their labor and not have to be dependent on these services. We have a housing shortage in rural Oregon. The vacancy rate in Coos County is less than 3%. But we just have a real shortage of affordable housing here, so that's a challenge that a lot of low-income earners are facing right now. We just don't have a diverse rental market and the urban market. You have a lot of developers who are contributing time and energy to large rental projects. And we don't have that here. We also don't have a robust, a robust housing authority that has a large budget. And some businesses have recognized that this is a really significant issue. So, for example, in Tillamook County, the Tillamook Cheese Factory contributed $50,000 of the $90,000 budget of that county's housing task force because there was so little housing available for their workers. And they thought it absolutely, this is a quote, absolutely threatens the viability, end quote, of their company. So, they actually contributed most of the budget for their housing authority and the rest was covered by grants just to provide housing in that rural county because it was such a crisis. And we're kind of in a crisis too. I mean, it's not as, quite as dramatic as Tillamook County, but we have low-income earners. They have a really hard time finding smaller apartments in Coos County and then being able to afford them because a one-bedroom apartment costs $550 if you're lucky. And that's a week and a half worth of pay if you're a low-income earner. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on the lack of affordable childcare. That's an issue too. It's extremely expensive. It costs more for childcare in Coos County than it does to attend one of Oregon's public universities. So, there's just not a lot of availability here either. So, that's a challenge low-income earners are facing in rural areas, more so than in urban areas. So, what are the challenges faced by businesses in Coos County? So, we have the decline in larger industries that fueled our economy. We have some economic stagnation and we have a consumer base that really does not have the spending power that we could envision for that consumer base. Not to put too fine a point on it, there's pictures of downtown Kokil. But if we, we also have a lot of corporations who are operating in Coos County. They can absolutely afford to pay a higher minimum wage, a living wage. And that's hundreds of thousands of dollars that are going to be coming into the pockets of Coos County workers that they can then spend locally. And economists have really found that it's low-wage earners that spend their money locally because they're spending it directly on food, on housing, on transportation. And they're more likely to, you know, change their habits in terms of going out to eat more, buying more groceries, things like that. Those are the first things that they do, you know, not going online, buying a lot of luxury goods, for example. So, you can envision that we have, we have actually a lot of these large corporations in Coos County and that is going to have a measurable impact in our local economy because those people are going to be making a lot more money who work there. I think the big concern for everyone, so I have very interesting questions that people have about this, is what will it do to small businesses? We have data from the past, so this is a 42% minimum wage increase here in '89 to '91, just phased in over three years. And there was no measurable effect on the health and growth of small businesses here. This is a 62% increase that we're proposing. So, this is a larger increase. Economists predict that prices will need to go up by about 1%. And so, that's not going to, some people will say, well, then prices go up, what's the difference? Well, prices are already going up and they will need to go up a little bit for businesses to compensate with this. But they're not going to go up to the point where, you know, a gallon of milk costs $9 or something like that. They're going to go up in a more reasonable way that people will be able to absorb. So, this is showing how small businesses are hurt more by recessions than by wage increases. They can be benefited by wage increases because they'll have customers who can spend more money at their establishments too. So, low-wage workers are very excited. They spend a lot of their wages. The latest studies from UC Berkeley and UCLA are saying that that will create additional $1.12 of spending money for each doll, extra dollar paid to a low-wage worker in our economy because they really think this is going to be an economic boost. So, that's what economists are saying right now. There's also the issue of businesses, for example, restaurants, that are basically in a pattern where they're constantly having to train people because turnover is such an issue. So, you're going to have lower turnover because people are able to stay at one job and may be able to work one job instead of several. They'll be more dedicated and productive employees, healthier and happier, be able to provide for their families. So, higher wages have proven to decrease turnover. I think there's a lot of businesses who really will see benefits from that because they'll be training people so frequently. There's a recent report out from the UC Cornell School of Hospitality. And they found, they did a 2015, they did a study last year of minimum wage increases and restaurants. And they found that the minimum wage increases did not decrease demand or profitability to the extent that restaurants closed or hired fewer people. In fact, they found that minimum wage increases reduce turnover, increase employee productivity. So, restaurant sales have also been on the rise. Projector growth last year, I haven't heard if this was confirmed in Oregon, was restaurant sales went up by 3.2% in our state. So, restaurants are doing well in general in our state. And again, this is something about, we're not appealing employees. People really want to work for those businesses, but maybe feel the pressure of needing to find a job that pays a higher wage. No, no proven impact on job growth. I haven't been able to get statistics on how many low-wage workers work more than one job, but it's, anecdotally, it's pretty significant. A lot of the low-wage workers that I know work more than one job. They might not have to do that if they were raising the minimum wage. So, that will free up some jobs for other people. There's also just been no proven impact or correlation between raising the minimum wage and growth of jobs in area, any area like rural or metro. So, we don't think this is going to be creating the catastrophic changes in employment that we also can, that some people are really concerned about. So, why 15? Well, $15 an hour, if you're going to significantly raise the minimum wage, we should do it right and we should really make it a living wage. So, over to our economists in the U.S. who signed a letter for president saying that they think that $15 an hour is the right number. It's really the amount, you think that's $3,000 a year. So, it's really going to pull somebody out of poverty. They'll be able to support themselves and possibly one child. And they'll be able to, for example, go back to school. They'll have money they could possibly save. This is really the wage that will pull people out of that situation of chronic working poverty and be able to give them the opportunities that the American dream has promised for so long to so many people. Rural areas do have unique challenges. So, the group that I am a part of, we're very good to this idea that rural areas need lower minimum wages. Of course, there are different employment patterns in rural areas. But there's also unique challenges to those areas that are difficult for low-income earners. So, we would argue that the same $15 living wage is applicable and beneficial to those areas too. This is the ballot language, so it will be phased in over three years to 2019. And so, it will be on the November 2016 ballot. Looks like we're on track to get all our signatures for it to be on there. So, we will, we'll have enough signatures by July 1st. It's about 120,000. And it will be on the ballot during that presentation here. Hopefully, the voters turn out for that. I would love to take any of your questions. I'm very, this is the first time I've really presented about this in this area. We're hoping to do some forum, a forum or two this summer to kind of get out the word about this for people who might be on the fence. And I've been canvassing with some people who are interested in it and are supportive of it. But I'm very curious like what kind of questions people would have in this area about it. So, I'd like to just open it up to any questions that folks might have.
All right, got you. You're welcome. All right, well, as far as question and answer time, councillors can. And if you want to talk to people afterwards, that's, that's.
Okay, all right.
We've got a process here. I appreciate you wanting to answer questions.
Okay.
Does anybody, I mean, almost 50 minutes, a little bit longer, but it was.
Oh, sorry, okay.
Lots of information that take, I don't know if anybody has any questions right now, but obviously it's.
We're concerned.
Yes, councillor.
Yes, I have a concern.
Okay.
I am on a fixed income. I started working at 14 for 45 cents an hour as a soldier. I, I am concerned that this will raise prices. And my fixed income now, luckily it's not 45 cents an hour, would be losing ground. So, what kind of answer do you have to that?
Yeah, well, that is a concern. I think the benefit split is not going to be as dramatic as people are concerned about because people have been working on that and seeing that people, the prices are not going to go up as significantly as the people are really worried about because 1% is not that significant for most food items, for example. Also, something to keep in mind is the state of Oregon is going to be getting a lot of more income tax revenue and saving money on social services from this, hundreds of millions of dollars. So, I do think that that's an issue that will have to be worked out during the phase in. But the state of Oregon is going to have the money to do something about that, for sure.
But that money to the state of Oregon is not going to help me.
Well, hopefully, because I mean, this is something we often continue to advocate for, right? Like the ballot, the ballot measure is by nature pretty straightforward and simple in a way. I mean, this is just phasing in a minimum wage over three years. And so, during that process, it will be the duty of legislature, legislators. People with a $15 minimum wage, we know we're not going to go away. We're still listening to people and their concerns about this. And we're going to have to work on some of those issues during that time.
Any other questions from Martha? No, I think councillor Heaton's concern is probably the biggest concern a lot of people around here are going to have. And you and I talked about this, Martha. I think the best thing you can do is if you're going to have a wage increase, you need to have, take steps through the tax code, the regulatory code to offset those expenses for businesses. So, that it's not a loss for the business. You don't have the inflationary impact. You need to get that purchasing power for the workers, which is good for business. But I think, you know, and again, the legislation needs to do its job and help some of our businesses out with some regulatory and some tax changes. Because if this does happen and you have that, you've got a lot of, a lot of economic potential. So, well, thank you very much for your presentation then. I'm sure if anybody has questions for you, I'll stick around for after the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Did Mr. Swan have something to say?
No.
All right.
Okay. I'm happy to talk to people afterwards too. And I also brought the ballot petition. Do you want to sign? Thanks.
All right, thank you very much. All right. Let's move on to agenda item eight, accepting quotes for library pre-design reporting design. Anne. I mean, it's all in the packet, but if you want to summarize. Okay, that's fine.
We published a request for quotes in a Portland commerce publication and the local editor and received three packets from companies listing their qualifications. I went through those, I, everybody got copies of those quotes. And I went through them and made a short and dirty analysis comparing all of them on one page. The points that we asked to be covered in the RFQ. And those are the ones that we got. That's the information they gave us on that summary, but you're having your packet.
All right. So, is there a motion to accept the quotes?
I think that we accept all the quotes.
Okay, we got like a trifecta there. I heard Heaton a lot, so councillor Heaton makes the motion. I'm guessing one of those two others will second the motion?
I will second it.
Okay, councillor Graham seconds. Any discussion beyond what we already know? Hearing none then? All those in favor of accepting the quotes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Well, six, zero. All right, now the motion to award contract for library pre-design reporting conceptual design. All right.
I approve. We award project HGE Incorporated for the cost of $21,350.
All right, the motion has been made. Is there a second?
I see.
Councillor Chappell, seconds. Discussion. Hearing none then? All those in favor of awarding the contract, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six, zero. All right then, and you said you wanted to say something about the economic redevelopment conversation downtown. Well, it's the good order. What do you have?
Well, I don't want to let this go. I know that we don't have some of the impact that's. But you know, right now, we have a lot of businesses that do not have, we have businesses that do not have correct. Can't have, you know, we've talked about this before. You can't have two pairs, two hires all at a time. We have, we saw the roof go, you know, at Wayne Nelson's during the storm. And in fact, we were across the street at the carousel and all of a sudden that wind came and we saw this. We saw the roof go up and we thought it was going to go down. And I know that that's a concern because they're going to have to do some things to that. And I know they're going to be coming to ever renew. But I know that, you know, Marcy's place, you know, we had some problems. That's one of the reasons that we moved out of there. I know the Stacy's had to move out. It just seems like there's a lot of things happening downtown. And I know this isn't an easy thing, but I just really think that this might be the time that we kind of think about, there might be something that we need to do to kind of go forward for this, you know, to better this town. It's going to be hard to do. And I know I need to know from people, you know, and everything exactly what it's going to cost and things. But I think now is a really good opportunity that we have because there's a lot of things going on downtown that maybe would help, we could help our town and we could do for it.
Well, Ben and I have been talking about this for some time behind the scenes. And, and I know as soon as we get all the hard numbers, I'll put this on the agenda for discussion about if we want to pursue it further. I know Ben's getting all the information and I'm sure we'll have it soon.
Because I'm afraid it's so easy for us to just let it go.
Oh, I completely understand.
Because we know it's a concern and so I really don't want to let it go.
Well, thank you. Is there anything else for the go? Ben?
Just a reminder to the council that our council retreat is scheduled for the 19th.
And I know we've got League Oregon Cities here on the 17th, if I'm not mistaken, at, at the Kokil Valley Hospital.
Correct.
It's open to the public and, you know, anybody's glad to come and listen and just see what we're all up to. We're going to be talking about public safety and mental health treatment funding and particularly, in particular jail bed space at county jails, which has been such a big issue in our region of the state. And I also want to say, I accepted the gracious invitation of Kathy Semenetti of the chamber to present my State of the City address at their event on February 27th, where I'm going to outline my policy priorities for the year and where I think we need to be going. So, it's been a pleasure to be there the last few years and it's a great event. I encourage everybody to show up and support the chamber. And they've really stepped up and they're doing a lot more in the community, so, you know, show them your support. All right then, if there's nothing else, we're adjourned at 8:14. All right then, if there's nothing else, we're adjourned at 8:14.